Get started. Thank you all for being here for our first board meeting for 2020. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence in honor of National Law Enforcement Day for 131 police officers that were killed in the line of duty last year in 2019. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, before we get started with our regular administrative business, Clerk Potvin will administer the oath of office to myself and Trustee Gerber and Trustee Graziano.
Burke.
Burke.
Buick.
Buick. What did I say? Oh, excuse me.
Didn't you say Burke?
I did say Burke.
Okay.
Apologies.
All right. Do you want to do it individual? You want to do it all at once?
Well, you guys want to do it together? Individual? Individual.
Individually? Okay. Do you want to go first then?
I guess so.
Okay, so raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Timothy P. Egan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of?
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of?
Village Mayor.
Village Mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay, so please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sarah Buick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of?
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Next.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Hi. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Chris Graziano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of?
I will faithfully discharge the duties of?
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Anyone else?
Anyone else need to be sworn in for anything? Village Clerk is ready. Okay. Okay, so now that the oath of office is taken care of, we'll get started with the mid-year reorg for 2020. First, I'm going to appoint Trustee Giacomozzo as Deputy Mayor. Next, I'll need a motion and a second to establish the following liaisons to the village, of the Village Board. To the Town Board, myself and Trustee Giacomozzo. To the Planning Board, Trustee Graziano and Trustee Gomez. To the Zoning Board of Appeals, Trustee Giacomozzo and Trustee Buick. To the Fire Department, myself and Trustee Gomez. To the Water and Sewer Departments, myself and Trustee Graziano. To the Building Department, myself and Trustee Buick. To the Highway Department, myself and Trustee Giacomozzo. Employee Liaisons are myself and Trustee Giacomozzo. And Insurance Liaisons, Trustee Buick and Trustee Gomez. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No.
He's just turning on your mic. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I need a motion and a second to appoint the following individuals to the following positions. Appeals Officer for Foils, myself. Village Clerk, Treasurer and Registrar, Desiree Potvin. And Procurement Officer, myself.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Need a motion and a second to designate Richard Golden with the law firm of Burke, Mealy, Golden and Norton as Attorney for the Village.
Anybody?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion and a second to establish meeting dates and meeting public comment procedures as presented.
On the question, can we consider?
They have the motion and a second for us to have discussion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Can we consider moving it from 7:00 PM to maybe 7:30?
We can consider that, but this is what's posted now. You want to do that at the next reorg or?
It's entirely up to the board.
How's the rest of the board feel?
I'm entirely up for that.
You ever make it easier?
7:30 script.
Okay, so we'll make that amendment and the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, motion and a second to adopt the following procedures to be followed during the public comment period segment of the meeting as presented in the documents. To establish meeting procedures and public comment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Procurement policy, I need a motion and a second to adopt the procurement policy as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve as presented the form below detailing the official undertaking of municipal officers of the village.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to administrative business, we need a motion and a second to accept the minutes from December 12th, 2019.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Approval of abstract, David? Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Need a motion and a second to approve abstract, uh, contain, thank you, 14 containing vouchers, 191199 to 191293, voiding check 18750 totaling $284,465.55.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion and a second to approve abstract 15 containing vouchers, 191293 to 191353 totaling
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Need a motion and a second to appoint MEO Tom, or, sorry, I didn't see that. Troy Shadig, effective December 30th, 2019.
I'll make that mo-
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Need a motion and a second to approve Fire Department request, uh, 2020-01 totaling approximately $649.99 for the purchase of a portable radio scanner.
Uh, I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Old business, return of maintenance bond for Mercedes Way. Need a motion and a second to approve the return of the road maintenance bond for Mercedes Way pending payment of all consultant fees as recommended by Dennis Lindsay, Building Inspector Gary Thomasberger and Superintendent Rob Wyon.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Need a motion and a second for the acceptance of dedication of the Smith Grove Troutbrook Maintenance Transmission Line.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. New business, we have an amendment to the employee handbook for the village for reproductive health decision-making policy. I need a motion and a second, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Need a motion and a second for the appointment of a site inspector for 14 Corporate Drive Office Building. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, we have to appoint H2M as site inspector for the project known as 14 Corporate Drive Office Building as recommended by the Building Inspector Gary Thomasberger.
I'll make that mo-
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Need an appointment of a site, a motion and a second for the appointment of a site inspector for the Timber Trail subdivision, again, as, to appoint H2M as the site inspectors for the project known as Timber Trail subdivision as recommended by the Building Inspector.
I'll make that motion again. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Need a motion and a second for the return of a building permit fee for the Sunrun Installation Services Building Permit 19-4041.
I'll make that motion.
Less the $50 administrative fee as recommended by the building inspector.
And I'll second Jesus's, uh-
First.
First.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, that concludes the regular business. Now we'll move on to public comment. So is there anybody in the first row that would like to say anything? Anybody in the second row? Robin? You know what to do and where to go.
Adorable.
Did I ask you to something?
Is everyone? Um, no. Thank you. Anyway, Robin Kraus, Highland Mills. Um, can you, abstract number 15 for today, vouchers 191343 and 1344 of the Orange County Sewer District Number One, could you please clarify what that's for?
What that's for, is that what you said?
Yeah. It's a large amount of money.
That's the semi-annual payment to the county for the maintenance of the Orange County Sewer District Number One.
Okay.
We get those twice a year.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to congratulate Trustee Buick, Trust, uh, Mayor Egan, sorry, and, uh, Trustee Graziano. Almost forgot. Um, with your leadership, I look forward to moving Woodbury forward. So thank you for stepping up.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else in the second row? Anybody in the third row? Anybody in the fourth row? Mr. Smith? Please come up to the podium, state your name.
I assume this is still on, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, again, my name is John Smith, Highland Mills. I had a couple of issues that I was going to bring up, but at first I'd like to congratulate all of the people on the board, and I hope we will be well-represented on the issues that are probably going to come up during the year, especially involving our neighbors to the west of us. I just want to bring up one issue today, and it seems to be some confusion, and that is I got my cable bill today in the mail, or yesterday, and it seems they're going to increase rates in February. Probably mine will go up around $25 or $30. That includes internet and television. It's about time you took a stand and find some sort of a consultant or whatever. We'll explore negotiations with them, they're always crying about this, that, and so forth, but we're the ones that are being harassed and whatever, disenfranchised as far as cable TV goes or whatever. Not only will the negation, negotiations help, but you ought to find some alternatives for us that will bring that up. But the big question I find is, nobody knows whether the town or village is responsible for cable vision.
I can probably-
And who will, thank you, who will negotiate?
Yeah, yeah, so-
And who signs the contract?
Well, the contract is with the town of Woodbury, not the village of Woodbury, but I can tell you, John, that it is on our radar, it's something we've talked about individually at the board level for quite some time, and we're going to be looking at to see what we can do about that.
But are you going to be proactive?
Of course we're going to be proactive, but I can't, you know, there's an existing contract with the town right now, not the village.
But I understand that expires on March 1st.
And that's why we're going to be looking at it.
So something has to be done pretty quickly.
March 1st of 2021.
Yeah, 21.
Oh, 21 now.
Yeah.
They, nobody even knew what the date was.
Oh, it's March of 21, but we are going to be looking into that over the next 12 months to see what we can do about that to help protect the residents.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just give you a little heads up, as far as, you know, franchising for utilities, you know, cable is a franchise right that would be negotiated by the town slash village, should be the village. If you have an issue with the bill or the amount being charged, that's handled under the New York State Public Service Commission, so there's a number on their bill that you can call and, and talk to them about that, but they set the rates for all private utilities.
Public Service Commission?
Yes, the New York State-
Sets the rates?
Yes, the New York State Public Service Commission is in charge of setting rates for all private utilities in the state of New York.
So how does cable vision get away with it?
They go to the commission and they prove out what they need for rates, and the commission approves the rates. If you have an issue with the rates, I would call them and file a complaint.
Thank you, John. Anybody else in the fourth row, I think that was? Anybody in the fifth row? Anybody in the last row, if that wasn't the last row? Anybody in the back of the room? Mrs. Hunter, come on up.
Maria Hunter, Woodbury resident. First of all, congratulations to all the incumbents and, and new members to the board and Mike, not Mike, I'm sorry. That was, sorry, God. Tim, best of luck, I know you're going to do well because I've known you for many years, and I know I was like one of the first few people that invited you to join us way back when with the Common Sense Party and the community. So I know you're going to do well as mayor, and I appreciate that you did take the steps to go forward to become mayor, and I know with you as the leadership, we will go further with the Village Board, so I do appreciate that. Tara and Chris, thank you for running and doing what you do. Andrew and Jesus, step it up this year, you got a, you got a good team to work with. In response to, um, the cable, I personally spoke with Councilman Robert Hunter about the issue because our bill is going to go up at least $65. He is working with the board members, and I know he's already spoken with, via email with the town clerk, he's looking at the contract, because as you stated, it is up March 1st to 2021, so I know the Town Board is going to be putting on their work session sometime in February, so trust me. One councilman on that Town Board has heard it loud and clear because $65 is not a lot, is, I can't deal with it. Also, for those who are here tonight, Monday night, there's a Town Board work session, supposed to start at 7 o'clock, and I'm asking all residents, pro, con, they're going to be discussing the pool, they're going to be presenting to the board, is going to be reviewing it, the Parks Committee will be there, and any resident that wants to know what's going on with the pool should come out and get the information so that we all know what is going on, because we need to help, we need to open up that pool in Central Valley. So, once again, thank you everyone for running.
Maria, what time is the work session?
7:00. 7:00. And I believe it's still in the-
Town Hall?
Clerk can probably confirm, they didn't move it, right? It's still there in the-
As far as I know, it's still at the meeting room.
Yeah, it's in the meeting room. Okay.
Thanks, Maria.
You're welcome.
Anybody else in the public before we go to department heads? Anyone at all? Okay, Rob, you have anything?
I don't.
Okay. Jessica? Mickey?
No.
Okay, we'll go to board member comment, Trustee Giac-, uh, excuse me, Trustee Graziano.
Yeah, Andrew's usually at this end. They put the long-winded people down this end.
It's tradition.
All right, um, yeah, I have a few comments. Uh, first, I'd like to thank all the wood, the voters of Woodbury for entrusting us and electing us through our positions this year. Um, I'm committed to working tirelessly for the community, and I think we're going to do some really good things together. I also wish to thank my family, because without their love and support in this, my sitting here today wouldn't be possible, so then, that's really the most important thing. I'd also like to thank the previous board for all the work they've done in leading our village. However, it's the dawn of a new decade, and we're going to require adaptation and change to be successful. I have never accepted status quo or believed in doing things the way they've always been done, and this position is going to be no exception. My goal is to provide a new set of eyes and a fresh perspective to the issues that we face in Woodbury, and help provide solutions that will lead to successful outcomes for another decade and beyond. So in the spirit of looking at things in a fresh perspective, I ask the support of my fellow board members to consider putting in a temporary building moratorium for our village. Development and growth are not inherently bad things, but they need to be done and done correctly with a plan and a strategy. Not every single piece of open land that we have needs to be developed. Preserving open spaces is just as important to preserving the character of a community as is the things that we approve to build. So, I'd like to take a real serious look at this. We need to ensure that we have the proper infrastructure in place, enough capacity in our water and sewer services to support further growth. Without these crucial pieces of information, we cannot responsibly approve future development. So along these lines, I'd like to propose two things for consideration for our board moving forward. One, I'd like to call for the, on the village to institute a water and sewer capacity applications as part of any application to our planning board. Every property developed and everything built should be required to submit water and sewer demand projections certified and stamped by a licensed professional engineer for any project they seek approval for. And secondly, I'd like a full accounting of our current water and sewer capacity and the already allocated demand on that capacity. Proper and prudent planning cannot move forward without a full assessment of all available free water supply, and prudent planning also dictates that we keep a certain free water supply available at all times and not allocated to development to account for potential emergencies. What is available supply today can be, very easily become untenable in the future if one of our wells has an issue related to yield or taken out of service for future water quality regulations that are being promulgated as we speak. Lastly, I'd like to call for a committee to be formed to take a fresh look at our village comprehensive plan. While the plan has served as well for the last decade, what do we as a community want Woodbury to look like for the next 10 years and beyond? My, what is our 2030 plan? What do we want to look like? So my thought is that we put together a diverse community panel consisting of citizens, large and small members of our business community, as well as representatives from the town and the village, to all work together to take a look at our plan and make recommendations that will help shape the future of Woodbury. Now is the time to plan and build a strategy that will carry Woodbury into the future. We need bold ideas and a willingness to question status quo and the ability to work together to accomplish our goals. I'm excited to be part of it, and I look forward to serving the citizens of Woodbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, Trustee Gomez.
Mine's not a little, but, not long, but I'm also feeling under the weather, so I apologize. Um, I just want to take this chance to say congratulations to you guys, congratulations to me, and I look forward to working with you guys hand in hand to bring Woodbury forward and bring our community together instead of so apart. So, look forward to start running, uh, this coming season now, so we'll look forward to our future.
Thank you, Jesus. Trustee? Trustee Buick.
Thank you. Like CJ, I'd like to first thank the residents of Woodbury for putting their faith in me and trusting me with their vote. I promise to work as hard as I possibly can to make sure the residents are always kept top of mind and that every decision is made in their best interest. I also would like to thank my incredibly supportive family, who are by my side every step of the way along this journey, especially my husband, Chris. My kids were and are my biggest inspiration and my reason for entering this endeavor. The choice to become involved in the community at this level was made easier by my family's growing love for it and my recognizing that more voices are needed to be heard to preserve the very things that we fell in love with. While Woodbury is at a critical juncture in its history, it is ever so important for residents, especially those of us with little children, to become involved to make sure our interests are being represented and are being heard. Uncontrolled development has proven to be detrimental to so many aspects which impact our quality of life. As a community, we must understand the delicate balance between the preservation of our natural resources and development. Smart growth is possible if properly monitored and if respect is maintained for the natural beauty surrounding us. Which brings me to a concept that I believe we as a board should begin exploring as a village, something called a community preservation plan. I ask each board member up here tonight to strongly consider making this a part of our goals in the very near future. It is something that was successfully implemented in the town of Warwick some 10-plus years ago, when the Town Board and the residents recognized the importance of maintaining its character and sought out a plan that was inevitably implemented to do just that. Now, there are several steps that would need to occur for this to become a reality here in Woodbury, but it is something I think it is essential and necessary to fight for. We must be better at preserving our natural beauty, protecting our water sources and our open green spaces. This is why the majority of us sought out a place like Woodbury to hang our hats and to call home, so it is time we figured out creative ways to stand up and protect it. Again, thank you, Woodbury, for the opportunity to represent you. I look forward to working together towards building a better, stronger, and flourishing community that each of us can enjoy and love for many years to come. Thank you so much.
Trustee Giacomozzo.
Okay, so, uh, just piggybacking on what both, um, Trustee Buick and Trustee Graziano have talked about, I definitely, um, I definitely think, I definitely think, no, I know, we've got a cold also, I don't need to get that. I definitely think, uh, at the next meeting, we really need to seriously consider a moratorium, or at least a study on, um, water and sewer moving forward. The larger we get, the bigger problem this becomes. Orange County already has a sewer capacity problem. Moving forward, we also have a volunteer problem in Woodbury that is affecting both our Woodbury Community Ambulance and our fire departments. So, uh, hopefully by our next meeting, we can have something more tangible that we can move forward with and, and discuss further. In the meantime, what I wanted to discuss was a hot-button topic here in New York, which is the new bail reform bill that went into effect January 1st. Now, personally, I'm fine, and I, I wrote this down, but I'm fine with Intelligent Thought-Out Reform Act that weighs the pros and cons of bails and the effects it has on the offender. Their family and the community as a whole, there is room for change. A poor person should not sit in jail for a year on a misdemeanor because they couldn't make a $500 bail. Unfortunately, this current bill was not really thought out and was not even debated. It was a last-second add-on to the state budget bill. What I am proposing to do tonight is to read a resolution and have the Village Board vote on it and then move it forward from there. I'm calling it the Urge the New York State Legislature to Consider Immediate Changes to the Newly Enacted Criminal Justice Reform Bill, and it reads like this. Whereas in April 2019, the New York State Legislature passed sweeping criminal justice legis- legislation changing, changes, among other things, the use of bail and rules regarding the sharing of evidence in criminal proceedings, whereas the changes went into effect January 1, 2020. And whereas, prior to the changes taking effect, many district attorneys, law enforcement officials, residents of New York State express serious concern regarding the new laws, including the elimination of the ability for a judge to set bail in most instances, impacted discovery timelines in a criminal proceeding, and law enforcement's compromised ability to safely engage witnesses, and whereas although the laws were passed with the intention of reforming injustices within the criminal justice system, which we are fully in favor of, we firmly
which we are fully in favor of, we firmly believe that the unintended consequences pose serious risks to the public safety of our communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the village board of Woodbury urges the New York State Legislature to immediately revise the newly enacted criminal justice reform laws to address the concerns of New York State Attorney General Letitia James, district attorneys, and law enforcement officials throughout the state, while maintaining the intent of the laws which were to alleviate disparities within our system, and, two, directs the village clerk to forward a copy of this resolution to New York State Senator James Scoofus, and New York State Assemblyman Colin Schmidt. And that's it.
Yeah.
I would like to.
We can't do that now, we are in board member comment, uh, if we're going to have a resolution that we're going to vote on, we'll do that on the regular agenda at our next meeting. Okay, so, uh, you know, my fellow board members had a lot of comments about our resources, and that's pretty much what I was going to talk about, but before I get into that, I just want to thank my family for standing behind me during this, uh, latest, uh, run for public office. Uh, it wasn't a popular decision in my household, but, uh, my family got behind me a hundred percent, and, uh, they're sitting in the entire front row and even part of the second row, so, thank you all for coming out, I love you all, thank you very much. So, in twenty twenty, uh, the village of Woodbury is going to see the largest period of growth, uh, in our history, in the history of our community, uh, and in fact, the largest period of growth since, uh, the Woodbury Common came to town in nineteen eighty-five. Uh, we have six hotel projects before the planning board either now or coming up very soon. Uh, the TOD development down in the Harriman, uh, the Gardens of Harriman down by the train station is going to be coming back. Uh, there's a lot of projects that are going to be happening, and as a result, uh, there's going to be a tremendous demand on our resources. Chris, you mentioned earlier about, uh, looking at our water and sewer capacity with regard to planning for the future and for verifying we have the capacity now, and that is something we do on a, on a monthly, quarterly, and annual basis. We look at our, uh, water capacity, what we're permitted for, what we're pumping, what we can handle, uh, we had a department head meeting, uh, two days ago, and we discussed that very issue. Andrew, you're correct, uh, I was at the county legislative meeting several months ago, where they discussed, uh, plans that Delaware Engineering had been presenting to the county, uh, to try and remediate, uh, uh, or mitigate the problem that we have with sewer right now. Uh, the treatment plant down in Harriman is permitted for six million gallons a day of sewage capacity. All three of those phases of that plant are very old, and they need a tremendous amount of money and, uh, uh, remediation to continue functioning. Um, the county is looking at adding, based on the recommendations by Delaware Engineering, another three million gallons a day, uh, in some form. There are many options that they're looking at, but the net gain they're looking at is about three million gallons a day. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, that is not enough for Orange County, never mind for Woodbury, uh, because our neighbors to the west, as Mr. Smith had referred them to, in the town of Palm Tree, uh, have about seventy-five hundred homes on the books for the next twelve months, and the average, the average usage for sewer is about four hundred gallons a day, uh, Mickey, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, and that would equate to that three million gallons a day. So the county, unless they've changed things, and they haven't had their public hearing yet on that issue as far as I know, uh, they're projecting enough volume to cater, or, excuse me, to handle one community's worth of demand, uh, and it's going to cost thirty, forty, fifty million dollars over the next twenty years. So that's not enough. We need to hold them accountable, them being the county, to make sure that they give the entire region the capacity that we all need. Uh, that's a big problem. So again, Chris, yes, we do look at that, we know what the numbers are, uh, uh, and we keep a very close eye on that, but with regard to all of the projects that are either before the planning board now or coming before the planning board, uh, you know, I would just urge the planning board to make sure that they, uh, as part of each application as they come forward, look at what that capacity or what that usage is going to be, and e- even in the TOD development, for example, the Gardens of Harriman, uh, they're going to have their own sewage treatment plant, but the effluent from that plant is still going to go into the Ramapo River, so that affects everything downstream, uh, that affects everything here in terms of what the rest of the plant can put into the Ramapo River, so that's an issue. Uh, our water is a little bit better than our sewer in terms of capacity right now, but we already have an application to the DEC for a replacement well so that we can take, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mickey, well number one offline, correct, for maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to take, uh, uh, an existing well offline for maintenance, uh, and replace that with another well, and then have some capacity for the future. So we are looking at that on a regular basis, it's something that we're very concerned about, and that we're going to be keeping a close eye on. Uh, with that, uh, I have no further comments, the public has spoken, uh, so I'm going to need a motion in a second to go into executive session pursuant to Public Officer Law Section one oh five, one E, to discuss the collective bargaining negotiations relating to the Highway Department Employment Contract that's expiring on May thirty-first of this year. Before we get that motion in a second and we vote on that, uh, after, we're going to go into our office for the executive session, and then we're going to come back out and adjourn the meeting, there'll be no further business this evening, so you're free to leave at any point at that, at that time. So a motion in a second, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you, everybody, and good night, we'll see you in a few minutes if you're still here. Uh, there will be no minutes of the executive session recorded. Oh, excuse, I'm so sorry. So I did this. Rob, you're going to join us in the executive session, right?
I could type three or four fast, but he talked really fast. So I could not-
I tried to slow down.
Yes. I could not. You, you were just really, really fast. You, I couldn't tell if you were reading or not, and so he leaned back, I was like, okay, I can type four too.
You are? The camera's still on, you know, we have to go into the meeting room. Yes. Like it? What are you doing? The camera's gone. You can choose that if you want.